Either a motion or anybody need anything pulled?
I've got a question for the Chair. I have three items. I don't want them pulled, I do want them discussed. What's the best way to handle it?
We suppose we can approve them and then just have this open discussion? Okay? Looking for a motion to prove the consent?
I'll move that.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Lenzmeyer, second by Commissioner Mergan. Further discussion? Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Yeah, a clarification on 4/8 and 18. 4 is appointing commissioners for county board calls. Can I get a clarification on that?
It's a statute that just requires this to be done at the beginning of the year to allow us to pay for your expenses for mileage and such.
Good. And, all right, that's helpful. What's the Highway Department Auto Scope Vision Camera System? What is that?
It's something, and Jody can help me out here, but it's normally in their repairs and maintenance, but it is a larger item that's a capital item. So we felt it was best to get that approved because the Board does approve capital items. What it actually is, I guess Jody could help us with that.
What's it actually do?
Ms. Tyke, would you like to clarify?
Good morning.
Morning.
It is actually the video detection at our traffic signals. And this particular system that we are buying is replacing the video detection at County Road 1 and 9th Avenue on the west side of the Sauk Rapids Bridge. The equipment's outdated and can't be repaired. In the past, we've never capitalized these items. We've just had it part of our maintenance and repair budget. But in some discussions, we thought it might be proper to actually have these as capital items. So because we haven't listed those out in our budget, you will see probably more of these kind of budget adjustments coming out where it comes out of our signal repair budget and gets moved into capital.
So we're gonna have more of these?
Unfortunately, yes.
Well, no problem. I mean, traffic safety is pretty hard to argue with. Thank you, Jody.
Jody, do you have number 18?
I do have number 18.
Just in case Lee.
You have a question on 18 also?
Yep.
So if we have rough potato or metaplexis japonica, and I'm not sure if I pronounced that right, to be quite honest, if we have that listed on our noxious weed list, we are able to get additional grant funding and then go out and treat these sites throughout the county. It'll help the property owners, obviously, and certainly keep it from spreading. But we do need to have this official action, listing it as a noxious weed in Stearns County. We did this in 2021 as well. Unfortunately, the grant funds were not able to be spent at the time. So we got an extension on those grant funds, but we still need to have it listed on our noxious weed list.
All right, well, thank you.
Jody, a quick question. You know, we got--
Commissioner Persky.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. We got rough potato, we got wild parsnip, we got cucumber. Do we have any more vegetables that are coming out, as you know?
Not that I'm aware of at this point, but no guarantees.
All right.
Okay, any further discussion on the consent items?
Thank you.
Okay. With that, all those in favor of approving the consent signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is Environmental Services. Morning, Shelley.
Good morning. Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. Becky Schlurf will not be here to present this item. When you made amendments to your appointments in December, removing Commissioner Clark from the AIS Award Panel, we did not replace that person. And at this point, we would like to replace that position with Ben Anderson. We think he has a good background. And he'll certainly help the committee in the decisions that they make on the award panel. I'll move that.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Clark.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Persky. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And that's all I have, unless you have anything for me.
Can you stick around after the meeting?
Yes.
Thanks. All right, our next item is Administration. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a couple of things under the COVID update agenda item, basically three things. One, just an update from our Public Health and Emergency Management. And then we want to spend a few minutes and talk about this OSHA mandate that we are trying to create a policy so that we are in compliance with that mandate. And then in your packet also, there was some information about how we can alter the format for our meetings if the Board would want to do that. So there's really three things. And we'll start with Melissa and Janet and Aaron or whoever's gonna make--
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I'm Melissa Huberty, the Human Services Administrator. This morning, we're gonna do an update on COVID. And then we're gonna mostly focus in on a lot of the activities that the Public Health Division has been doing. Because there's so many activities, we've actually been involved in. It's actually hard to summarize them all here. We will, after this board meeting, send out this week some information to you so you have it at your fingertips. So you'll know all the activities that the Public Health Division is doing. This morning, we're just gonna go over a few of those items. And so I'm gonna pass it over to Janice Olagowski, who's our Human Services Director in Public Health, and then Erin Tuffey, who's our Emergency Manager, to talk about the activities that we're doing in Stearns County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Morning, Janet.
Good morning. Always have to adjust the mic a little bit. Good morning, Chair, good morning, Commissioners. As Melissa indicated, the Public Health Director and here to give a little bit of an update on what might be happening in the world of COVID-19. Can we advance the slide?
Andy, do you have the--
My mic is the-- Okay.
There you go.
So you are probably familiar with this page. This is our current dashboard. You can peruse the data and have access to that at any time. This is also a public-facing dashboard, so our constituents can also review this. Wanted to give a quick update, though, on the latest variant that you may have heard of, Omicron. It is highly contagious. It is appearing to have milder symptoms. And in other parts of the world, it is burning out fairly quickly. However, in that time, we do expect our case numbers to increase quite a bit. We're watching that very closely. The hospitalizations with Omicron, however, tend to be, at least they look or appear to be at this point in time, decreasing. Delta remains active, steady, and perhaps declining. So we're watching that very closely as well. Really, what we'd like to say to you is remember to utilize the layered prevention strategies. Stay home if you are sick. Omicron is highly contagious. Wash your hands, use hand sanitizer, wear masks, social distance, vaccine and boost if you are able to do that. Later on, I'll be talking about some public health activities related specifically to COVID. But at this time, Erin will take the next couple of slides. Thank you.
Wait, could we back track to that? When it says deceased, what's the wording on that? Is it from COVID or is it with COVID?
That I could not tell you. It is because COVID is listed as the reason for being deceased. The reason for being admitted.
So it's from?
I could certainly look that up for you and see what the hospital list that definition is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Janet. Morning, Erin.
Good morning. Thanks, Melissa. So we wanted to provide some current information about vaccines in Stearns County. Coincidentally, today is the one-year anniversary of the first vaccines that we administered. So hard to believe sometimes that we've already been in that phase of things for about a year. You can see on this slide that we are able to break things down by the age categories that are eligible for vaccine right now. The highest number in Stearns County is 18 to 49-year-olds. But we definitely are seeing spread all throughout the eligible ages. This is updated daily through the Minnesota Department of Health and is available through the Stearns County website as well, if you're interested in checking this out for more current statistics. Next slide, please. And we just wanted to quick highlight some of the things that we have been doing in totality of our response to COVID. So first and foremost, since the pandemic began and we really started these efforts in February of 2020, we've had over 200 employees in 14 departments involved in this response, both from Stearns County as well as the city of St. Cloud. Between January and August of 2021, we held 153 vaccine clinics. Stearns County has nine strike teams to help distribute and administer the vaccines. And that's part of who was at all of these 153 events. As we continue to move forward with Janet's presentation, she'll talk a little bit more about some of the things that have been happening since August as well. And then lastly, I think something that we're very proud of here in Stearns County in public health for sure is that we have administered 1,900 vaccines with our staff efforts. So with that, if there aren't any questions, I'm gonna turn it back to Janet to give some highlights on what we're continuing to work on.
Maybe just one quick question. So are those at the, like, the river's edge and stuff like that? Where you gave the vaccinations or--
These are the ones in the clinics that we sponsored.
Okay.
So there have been far more vaccines community-wide through Centra Care and the state facilities like the Convention Center or the Armory now. These are ones that we actually receive the vaccine and then administer ourselves.
Okay, thanks, Erin.
You bet.
Okay, so both since the pandemic began, as well as August, when Delta presented in our communities and created an upsurge, public health has been actively involved in many different areas in the community. So we've been partnering with our healthcare partners in other counties to create the vaccine clinics that Commissioner Noch just asked about, where our staff are supporting the administration of vaccines, the education and outreach that has to happen, including the ever-important registrations so vaccines and immunizations are entered into the appropriate database. We've done that at the Global Mall. We've done that with faith-based sites, including mosques and multiple churches. We've done that in mobile clinics and different parking lots. We've supported vaccine administration at areas like Park Meadows. We're currently going to be involved and have been involved over the last month with vaccinations at the elementary schools in Local District 742. And we'll be doing some more of those throughout January. And that's the newly-approved 5 to 11-year-olds. That is the fastest-growing population of infections, and it is also the most recently approved. So as you may know, public health typically is one of our top 10 essential services, is to hit those gap areas. So while we support the large vaccination clinics to the degree that we can, we're really focused on reaching out to our homebound individuals, as you can see, as well as smaller or businesses that can't find their way into town. For example, dairy farms, those kinds of things where your employees are 24/7. We also do a significant amount of outreach to our homeless shelters to provide that outreach and education on vaccines. And just in general well-being is-- In addition, we also deliver food packages and arrange for medicinal supports from pharmacies for folks who are in isolation and quarantine and have no other support. Masks, gowns, and gloves are oftentimes included in that. If need be, we've also provided thermometers and oximeters that measure oxygen levels to help and assist with keeping people as healthy as we can, especially in the congregate care settings. We are also supporting the higher ed health services to assure that vaccines and vaccination administrations can be done effectively. In addition, we meet weekly, bi-weekly with the school superintendents to support school safety planning. And while they make their own decisions clearly, we support them through that guidance and understanding the different pieces of information that they may need at any time, depending upon the number of outbreaks, et cetera, that they may have. And as Erin indicated, we also manage accepting of those vaccines and making sure that we're getting those distributed as equitably as we can, as well as assuring that we are not wasting vaccines. In addition to that, we staff a countywide COVID hotline that gets utilized by any individual community members, calls from school personnel, businesses, pharmacies, individuals. We have lots of information that we support that with. And then we've also partnered very specifically with our Latinx communities, Fea Justicia, as well as the LEDC, the Latin Economic Development Commission that is headed by Monica Segura Schwartz. We have lots of other activities that we do. I couldn't possibly really go through all of them today. This is specific to COVID. And then while we're doing these things, we still continue to do many of our regular activities to support healthy families and feeding babies. So, thank you. Do you have questions about any of these?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. Do you have any idea the call volume on the hotline? Is it pretty active or has it increased?
It used to be super-active. Like, what we'll see is as surges go up in the community or outbreaks happen, we'll get more and more phone calls. We average, right now, about 10 or 12 a week, I think we're at. Erin and I and Mike Matnich, one of our public health supervisors, and Mike Poole, our GIS supervisor, also meet almost weekly now again to monitor our COVID hotline, to look at the support places that we can help out in the community. We also meet bi-weekly with Centra Care and the multicultural liaisons from MDH to manage much of that information and try to get that pushed out. So we try to really be proactive and get information out. So it's when people have really specific messages or questions that they call into the hotline.
Could you, by chance, state what the hotline number is?
Could I, by chance, state what that hotline number is?
You might have some listeners out there.
Yeah, I don't wanna--
It's on the main page of the county--
Thank you.
Is it?
Look, it's been a long time. I should have anticipated that question, right?
Well, I just figured if you had it handy, we'd announce it here, so-- Commissioner Clark?
Thank you. And maybe that is something we could even have on our screen during our meetings. It's just if you've got general questions, the number you call. So one of the ones, it does seem like, and you and I've talked about this, that it's really confusing right now about who, what, what rules to follow. I mean, there's the basics that you just talked about, so we have to keep reinforcing that. I had a conversation with one of the people at Centra Care yesterday, one of the docs who's part of the leadership on their efforts. And they're understandably really concerned, both about our vaccination rate, about their employees getting sick, about not having enough room. And one of the items that people may or may not be calling about this, but they've got to be confused about is what really is, if I've had contact, if a person's had contact with somebody who has COVID or has symptoms, how long do they stay out? Who does that apply to? And in this case, her-- The information she was passing on was when you're hearing about shortened isolation periods, it's for people who are vaccinated and boosted, not for anybody in general. So can you just talk a little bit, either of you, about where we're at with it? Kind of going back to whoever might be listening, it could be useful information.
Yes, absolutely, I can do that. And you're correct, Commissioner Clark. The CDC recently issued guidance related to isolation and quarantine times. The standard prior to that release had been 10 days for either isolation or quarantine for any time you've been exposed and/or have symptoms yourself. What recently has transpired is that the shortened days down to five days and then mask up for five days after that. While the CDC guidance does state general population, it is actually if you are vaccinated and boosted. MDH has not reviewed the guidelines fully yet, and we anticipate that they'll be issuing something for local public health directives in the state of Minnesota, too, as well, to address that. Initially, it was healthcare workers for the shortened isolation and quarantine. And then very quickly, the guidance was for the general population, if vaccinated and boosted. So there is some clarity that will need to happen there. That CDC guidance is five days for isolation and quarantine and then an additional five days of masking up. However, if you are symptomatic, stay home, regardless of the number of days that you've already been out. Stay home if you are sick, if at all possible. We know that's not possible for everyone, but that really is the best way to go. And my auspicious note taker here, let us know what that COVID hotline number is. And that is 320-656-6625. Again, 320-656-6625. Thank you, Melissa. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Clark?
It is just such a hard time right now. It's just hard to figure out sometimes what we can do. And given we're all tired of this. But it also is worrisome when you start hearing about younger people getting sick and being put in the hospital.
It really is. The push for vaccinations, again, is to really try to help people have that first line of defense, to have that immunity. We know that vaccinated folks are experiencing milder symptoms than perhaps unvaccinated. So that is, it is very important. This is not-- The CDC's decision on the shortened guidelines is really related to how transmissible Omicron is, where the symptoms pass faster and you-- I mean, the infection can happen faster and you experience the symptoms faster and go through presumably a shorter bout of infection. That's why vaccinated, shortened time for vaccinated folks, is really very important. If you are unvaccinated, you really should just stay home. Thank you.
Janet, another question. Do you have, when it comes to, like, private, like CVS, Walgreens or-- Where is there a place anybody can go for the county? Or maybe can you explain where you can maybe go if you want to be tested or maybe get the vaccine?
I actually can, yes.
Or a vaccine?
We have about 90 pharmacies in Stearns County. And the vaccines have been widely available for quite some time now. You're actually able to choose which vaccine you want. And so Centra Care is sponsoring walk-in appointments at the South Point site. That's been ongoing. You can do, you can go to a vaccination site online to find an appointment. You can call your local provider, and there will be appointments available. You can do, you can call your local pharmacy, and there will be appointments available. And I can get you the vaccination site, too, that will show you exactly where. We can get that posted. I believe it's out on the website, but we can get that posted as well.
Commissioner Persky?
Yeah, Janet, see, I'm quite concerned about the schools. You know, going back this week, we've got regular school day, we've got school activities. And it seems like we've actually backed off from the way we were treating the virus before. Now we've got something that's more contagious. Are we just gonna see the damn burst? I mean, seriously, if it's more contagious and we're being less secure, what's the prognosis of what can happen or are we gonna do?
We're watching that really closely. So globally, it appears that Omicron burns out rather quickly. So the surge that we're seeing, we should anticipate that subsiding much faster than Delta. And the symptoms of Omicron seem to be much more mild as well, especially if you're vaccinated and boosted. And so that's why we're pushing really to get those 12 to 15-year-olds vaccinated. The approval for 12 to 15-year-olds being boosted should be out sometime this week. We'll hear that. And so we'll join in those efforts. And 5 to 11-year-olds as well, we've been doing those vaccinations. That, and then the school planning, encouraging schools to really adopt masking, social distancing, safety, other kinds of safety, like washing hands, keeping your child home when they're sick. We know that's not possible for everyone, but it is a place that we're watching very closely. And that's why we meet with our superintendents weekly to monitor all of these different cases and see what we're looking at. We are going to see a surge of Omicron. That does seem to be very much in our future. Hopefully, we'll see that burn out fast. I don't know what fast is.
And so basically, it's gonna run its course?
It's basically gonna run its course, and we need to employ all those layered prevention strategies that we can, given the situations that people find themselves in as well. Vaccination and boosting is still our best options.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
While you were presenting, I had this scenario playing out in my head, imagining myself as a recently retired geezer sitting in my fish house, watching the underwater world go by. And I start feeling sick. I'm not gonna dial 656. I'm gonna dial 911. That's still okay, as long as 911 knows where the call ought to go. So my suggestion would be to get in touch with Lieutenant Mary Leiser. She runs our 911 system. And be sure that she doesn't know-- She doesn't have to do the direct reaction, but she needs to be able to do the referral. So there-- I'm just thinking about, but for the chair that I warm here on occasional Tuesdays, I wouldn't know that. So make sure they're in the information loop. They're more than willing to help. Great group.
Janet, the Sheriff's Department will come up and help Lee out here.
Lee, I apologize. Chief Deputy Miller with the Sheriff's Office. We can't take those 911 calls for people that are just feeling sick. We don't have the resources to do that. So they can call the non-emergency number for the Sheriff's Office, and they can make that connection. We prefer they go to the website and go to the hotline directly. But we don't have the capability right now to take those 911 calls. So I do not want them calling 911.
You won't have a choice. They're gonna call. You've got people that want--
If they're sick--
In just the shift that I did, there's one fellow that he calls in almost daily. And all he-- The guy has got real mental problems. And you can talk to him all day long, and he's not gonna quit calling. I admire your efforts to stretch your resources, but some things-- You are not the first choice, but you are the first choice a lot of people make.
Absolutely, I just--
I appreciate your concern, but in my case, it doesn't make sense. You, we, it isn't your and my decision.
And we absolutely will take those calls and we'll handle them. But that would not be my preference, I guess would be--
Okay, I'll go with that.
I would prefer them to call the non-emergency number for the-- That would be my preference. But absolutely, we won't turn people away if we get that call.
Yeah, I, you know, I prefer, you know, to have Christmas every day.
Commissioner Clark?
Did you do something on that first?
Go ahead.
Because it's not directly on point to this.
Oh, oh, go ahead.
Okay. This is actually, it was something that you and I actually talked about before this. You brought up the question about availability of tests. And it just seems like we're obviously having a pretty big shortage. They've been in and out of places. Do either of you have any updates about when the area might be able to expect, or people, human beings, might be able to expect being able to get rapid in-home tests again?
I don't know if Erin has updated--
I know we don't control any of that. I do want to be clear, because whoever might be listening. But it is hard. I know a lot of people were looking for them around the holidays, and especially given what the symptoms are, testing is important. So any information at all? Or is it really get ahold of your health provider and go get a test through them?
There are tests-- I mean, there is gonna be a testing shortage with the amount of testing that is coming on. And you will see that if you visit a pharmacy and you're trying to buy tests, you still might be able to do that. Testing is still occurring at testing sites. I don't know what the answer is to the testing availability at this point. We do, we have been having-- "we" meaning the group of us that meet weekly, have been having conversations with MDH about this. And people are aware, it's very concerning. We want to make sure that we can do as much as we possibly can. And so, again, public health's main goal is to attend to those gaps in service where folks who get-- where folks who get left by the wayside really need that attention. So we're focusing on really our homebound, homebound individuals, our communities that are just unable to get anywhere else. And so we are, as local public health throughout the state are, are trying to address even getting some testing kits available to us in those cases where you just simply can't get one anywhere else. But we would encourage people, go to testing sites, call your healthcare provider and try to purchase those over-the-counter tests. And there are differences between the testing opportunities available, which I wouldn't want to go into right this second, but we could get you that information as well.
And Mr. Chair, just really quickly, thank you for that. Obviously, one of the roles is communication and partnering. And you're doing a lot of communication and partnering to the extent when we get more information about additional easy ways for people to be able to get testing. Not to say that, you know, like I've gone to the CentraCare drive-through clinic a couple of different times. It's very easy and I got my results back relatively quickly. But especially now, the more information we can give to people, it's helpful. So thank you.
Thanks, Janet. Any more questions? Always. Thank you very much for providing the update to us.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, our next item is to approve the 2022 legislative priorities.
Mr. Chair, there's just a couple of other things related to the COVID update.
Sorry about that.
If we can stay with that theme, that's all right. I wanted to make the board aware of what we're doing in response to the federal OSHA mandate about requiring testing for those that aren't vaccinated. And you probably know, but the, this mandate was appealed at one point and there was a stay. And then there was an appeal in every federal district court and then they were all combined for efficiency. And I can't remember which court, the fifth or the sixth, anyway, lifted the stay. And now it's, now it's been appealed to the Supreme Court. And I believe they're going to hear that late this week, perhaps on Friday. I don't know when, when we would have a decision from the Supreme Court. So given that the guidelines would have us needing to implement this in early February, we are preparing as best we can to comply with the mandate. And so in essence, what it does is it requires us to, to, as best as we can, know who's been vaccinated and then require weekly testing for those that are, our employees that are not vaccinated. So as you might imagine, that's going to be a little, an administrative burden. I would say it might be a little bit disruptive, certainly, but with that amount of testing, it's probably going to be costly because we need to acquire the tests. We need to have someone to take care of all the administrative work that needs to go along with this. So we've had a team, many of which you've just heard from, and others that are pulling together a draft policy that would, that would guide our organization in complying with the mandate. And so if we do end up implementing this, I certainly wanted the board to understand how we're going to do that, or at least today, how we think we would do it today. We're still working on the policy. And Mr. Hamis has been instrumental in pulling this together, so I asked him to provide you with the details.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Steve Hamis, Assistant Administrator. Mike took care of a lot of what I was going to say, so thank you. Good prep. Yes, we did have a team led by Tyler Trickle, our risk manager, and members of several departments, Human Services, HR, Sheriff's Office and others, worked together on how to address the federal mandate as it relates to Stearns County as an employer. And again, the mandate is that, again, for those employees who do not indicate that they are vaccinated, that we're going to have to have them tested on a weekly basis. You heard Janet talk about the fact that testing kits are going to be in short supply. That's going to make this a bit more cumbersome and administratively difficult. But it's something that, again, we have to go through and comply with unless the Supreme Court were to make any, any changes in terms of the mandate. Again, the mandate states that, again, people have to identify whether their vaccination status, if they choose not to, and it's a choice, that they're going to have to go down this testing route. And while they wait for results for testing, there are restrictions on how much they'll be able to work. And that's going to be kind of dependent on the roles that our employees have. And so we're going to have to work through with all the departments to figure out how we can accomplish this. The unvaccinated are also going to be required to wear masks anytime they are in our buildings as part of this mandate. And so that's something, again, we've been communicating this, you know, throughout the course of the pandemic to wear masks. It was a requirement for a long period. We changed that to a recommendation. You can see signs around our buildings that still recommend people wear masks inside our buildings, vaccinated or not, in coordination with the advice from Public Health. But again, as part of the mandate, if you're unvaccinated, you'll have to wear a mask as an employee inside our facilities. Question?
What percentage of the employees are still working remotely?
At this point, we have about 60, 65% of our employees working remote on some basis. So again, we have some employees, you know, in different departments that are coming into the office one to two days a week in different capacities. In terms of completely remote, I would say 45, 50% maybe?
So you have some hybrid and some completely?
And again, we're working with departments as part of the strategic goals that the board set for the year to come up with policies for permanent flex or permanent remote work to be hopefully adopted later this year.
Okay, Commissioner Clark?
Thank you. Couple questions. One is, I believe, given the extra cost, ARP or the Farmer Cares dollars could be used so that we're not having to find other resources technically?
Right.
Okay. Second, this is one of the questions from CentraCare and others has been, putting a mask mandate in our buildings, period. Then you wouldn't be able to tell who was or wasn't and given the spread. So that may be something to consider if this stays in, is I would think we would not want to differentiate between people.
That's a very good point. Commissioner Clark, yes, testing is going to be quite expensive. So yes, the Budget Committee, you know, has already looked at, you know, CARES dollars as a source to help, at least for the first while. Again, we won't know how expensive the testing will be until we can ascertain how many people designate that they have in fact been vaccinated. You know, there are places out there, I know that counties larger than us where they're spending, you know, quarter of a million dollars a quarter on testing. So this could be significantly expensive.
And the court system has already been going through this. For example, so we do have people who work in our county that have been either, that they've had to say, tell, well, volunteer their information and/or do testing. I mean, that, so we've seen some experience with that. And then this, I think, relates to what Commissioner Natch was asking is, and maybe we won't know until and unless the Supreme Court says yes, is if somebody works 100% remotely, would they be required to comply with this too? Or is it only people who are coming into buildings?
That's one of the things, we've got a several-page draft here. We're, you know, continuing to meet this week to try to nail down all of those specifics. It's tricky because again, some people are completely remote. Some people are hybrid where they're coming into the building. Some are hybrid where they're going, you know, out into the community to do home visits. So you might be completely remote this month, you might not be next month. And so that's, if, if we can put a clear delineation around that, that might be something that would help, but.
It's complicated.
It's complicated.
Okay, thank you.
We are looking at signing a contract with a vendor to do a lot of the administrative work or as much as we can shift over to them. There are several places that have state contracts that we can sign on to for conducting the survey for employees to designate their status. And then they will also coordinate the testing and collection and sending them to the testing site and doing the results and transmitting those results to the employee as well as to the county. So we hope to have that set up in the next week or two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further questions? Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Is, you can't do this. If this isn't the complete answer, but is some cross-training of personnel possibly part of the solution when applicable? Obviously, we can't do this system-wide, but my impression is, number one, we don't know how long this will last. This particular incident could morph into another sort of situation. So in addition to what you've mentioned, the, a limited amount of cross-training so that folks could help out with an ancillary function in their department to a limited degree. But this will, this takes a multitude of actions for us to respond to. So think of all the tools you can, use all the tools you can. This will still be a challenge to the organization, but we are not alone because every organization that serves the public, for-profit, non-for-profit, so on and on the line, religious, we're all in the same boat.
Correct. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, in terms of the question, the short answer is yes. We can certainly look at cross-training. We've done that throughout the pandemic where it was needed and necessary. And again, we continue to look at that where it's feasible.
Thank you. Any further questions? Steve, you have anything else?
No.
The last item that we wanted to talk a little bit about here was, and I put a description in the packet there is that, that the county board can utilize a more of a remote or a hybrid format for meetings in the future as a result of a change in the open meetings law. And the county board could adopt a resolution that establishes, that allows commissioners to come in remotely and the public to come in remotely. Or as I outlined in the, in the packet, in at least one other county, the county administrator, the administration has just deemed, made that determination and that allows folks to come in remotely. And I just, you know, if the board's interested in doing that as we're in this kind of another peak of the pandemic, we could do that if, if we think that makes some sense. And in light of maybe some of the other policies that we're going to have to put in place here, we might find that that format is helpful, at least in the short-term future.
Okay. Commissioner Clark, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mike. Dr. Williams and I talked about this, as well as a lot of Hanson actually spent some time on research. We've got some other counties that are around our side that are doing this. You probably saw in the notes, we actually went through something similar. Scott County had somebody who contracted COVID and they wanted to be able to participate. This would give us some flexibility if someone was sick or if they felt more comfortable being in another room. And especially, I'm so thankful that we're spread apart and I like being able to see you better. And I continue to have someone in my family who's really vulnerable. And so I know if somebody is concerned, it can give us some flexibility. Thankfully, our staff has figured out how to do this. And I know that you don't need a motion from us. I mean, the question is whether we'd want to actually do a motion or just allow Mike to make that ability.
Commissioner Persky?
I guess I would be, you know, in favor of having something on the books, especially relating to like Planning Commission. If we have members that are sick and don't want to come in, yet we want to move things forward, that they would be able to, at least be able to attend remotely and then talk and discuss issues and actually have a vote, so we have a quorum. I mean, that would be helpful. Same thing with Park Commission too. Even, even when we have, let's say, only a half-hour meeting and somebody's got to come from the far end of the county with just, you know, routine business, if they can just attend, you know, remotely, that would be helpful for them, so.
Would that be something administratively though you would already be implementing? Are you, we're looking for, is it more just our board at this point?
Well, it could be.
Because I'm assuming administration would probably.
You could probably do it for the others. I mean, you could do that anyways. And I think for most of us, our job powers, boards that we're on, the vast bulk of them have been meeting remotely. But this would give members some flexibility. It would give our board some flexibility. If things got really bad, we could do what we did before and have the chair in the room. But it also could mean that it might be, I know Scott has had some situations where people have been in another space, kind of like you did, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, for a while as, or home. So if someone's had, if someone's sick, if someone's been exposed, it can reduce our possibilities of passing it on.
Commissioner Murray?
Hasn't administration already been making decisions?
Commissioner Murray, I guess in some, some ways we have, particularly when we have the peacetime emergency in place, but.
I know there are other counties that never, ever gave up meeting in person.
Right.
You know, so that was an administrative decision already, isn't it?
Yeah, and I guess I would.
So I don't see any reason to change anything.
And I guess I would be okay if administration would like to, you know, put something in place, you know, for the board. Because, you know, we're not here every day. You know, you know what the staff situation is. And we can run it maybe like the peacetime emergency if you feel, you know, more chair comes in or one other one in a different room. I guess I'd be open if allowing administration to make the call if it's needed.
And Mr. Chair, that's, that's where I've been at, unless administration says they'd like us to move on something, in which case I'm happy to make a motion. But I think, I share the sentiments that administration has the ability to do this and it's been confirmed by the county attorney.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Summarize it in four words. Be flexible and stay tuned.
Yeah, and I think that's really what we're meeting. And I was not thinking that we would go totally remote like, like we had in the past. But if we do use kind of in the Scott County mode here, it, it allows a commissioner or two commissioners to come in remotely. So it's really just to preserve that option, I think, is, is what I was looking at.
Sure. Yeah. I think we can all concur with doing what you will need to do.
Ultimately, our job is to serve the public and I, I'm willing to defend county actions where they're needed, whether we have the appropriate policy in place beforehand. It isn't that we ignore that stuff. It's just that you can't predict everything, you know. My crystal ball is only the 110-volt model. I can't afford the 220-volt model, so I can't predict all that stuff. So, yeah, let's get the job done. And if we step in in the process, as long as it's an aggressive mistake, I'm willing to take the blame for that.
Mr. Williams, need anything else on that?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, anything else on?
The last item under administration is the legislative priorities. And as you recall, we talked about these at, at your last meeting, I believe. And the board did approve that list of, of priorities. And what, what you have in front of you now is the same list that you, that we talked about, but you have the detail behind it. And so this would be what we would use as we discuss the priorities with our legislative delegation. It appears that January 18th, after our next regular meeting, is going to work best for our legislators. So, and that, that meeting could be a little bit long, so we might actually go have, have lunch that day with our legislators is the thought. But we'll know better when that agenda shapes up. So by action, I think you would just approve this list of priorities, unless you want to make some amendment to some of the descriptions.
Okay, thank you. Any, Commissioner Persky?
Yep. Dr. Williams, Randy, in particular, one issue that might come up in the legislature is relating to the elections and perhaps voter fraud, voter security and things like that. We don't have anything on our list, but I was just wondering if we want to offer to them the ability to answer any questions relating to the way we conduct our elections, if they have any questions, because it, it can be a hot topic once the session begins, if, if the political winds blow the way they have been nationally. And particularly, I want to applaud staff. You know, Mr. Walls about the way they handle it in the past. You know, we've got those paid personnel and also just the volunteers at each of the townships, schools, churches, and whatever that actually handled those elections, and they do quite well. And I want them to feel secure about the way Sterns County handles our elections.
Yeah, it's been very contentious at the legislature, any election legislation. And certainly, you know, the auditors, we have an association, and we're looking at election legislation every year. And we're very hesitant to bring much forward, even though there's administrative things that would save us time. And as you know, elections are very expensive. But to get anything passed in this atmosphere is very difficult. But I'll certainly have a few things that, if the conversation comes up, to have. One of the newer ones is similar to assessors, where, you know, people working in elections are getting some threats nowadays, which is a sad state of affairs. But some legislation in that regard to provide some protection for election workers.
Mr. Chair, and then just a lot of these concerns come out of misinformation. And ignorance. And so we certainly... Some of those things up.
Yeah, we certainly provide a lot of transparency. We've done a number of tours when we're working on the election process and the parties and the press we've had in to show them what we do specifically. Let them sit there and watch. So and we'll continue to do that this year, too. So, yeah.
Thanks, Randy. Any further questions? If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the 2022 priorities.
So moved.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Clark?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Commissioner Lenzmeyer. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And I believe that was the last item on our agenda. Lastly, we have issues by commissioners. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Happy New Year again to everyone. Obviously, that bitter cold, Commissioner Persky, I hope I'm not taking your thunder away. Make sure you're safe looking at the weather reports and appreciate the snow removal and everything else our Public Works Department does. I know that there's been some questions about a few gatherings we have coming up or we normally would participate in that are still in-person, that might be changing. MICA, I'm supposed to be asking everybody. I know a couple of us are registered, as well as Dr. Williams, if you're interested in participating in the annual meeting that will be with legislators right now. It is still scheduled for in-person. They are contemplating the backup possibilities of it becoming remote like GSDC just did. And then the NACO Legislative Conference will be coming up if you haven't registered for that. Marla and Jennifer can help with that. We do get good participation with our delegation, and we obviously have a robust agenda, so people participating is good. Again, there's a question about where things will be at, but as of now, that's in-person, too. And that's all I got.
Commissioner Persky?
Well, congratulations, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Hope your hands are ready to sign papers. Otherwise, I have nothing. Happy New Year.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
I need a ride to MICA, so don't leave home without me.
And Commissioner Morgan?
I have nothing.
Okay, and I don't have anything either. Thank you, and hopefully 2022 will shape up to be a better year, maybe than 2021, and we can get over the hill on this COVID variance. And things can move forward, hopefully closer to normal. With that, I can call the meeting adjourned.
Thank you.